Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today's date is Thursday, June 14, 2018. The time is 8:30 a.m. We'll begin today with roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Commissioners Womack.
President.
Voorhees.
President.
Vonck. Talan.
Here.
Steck.
Here.
Skaggs.
Here.
Ponstein. Morgan.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Mast.
Here.
Corndyke.
Present.
Coleman.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Bukowski.
Present.
Breavy.
Here.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Here.
Commissioner Antor.
Here.
Chair Saulfeld.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll move next to our invocation and pledge, and I'll call on Commissioner Melton.
Believe it or not, this is something that came up on my Facebook reminder, and I don't know how that happens. I'm not techie. But I thought I would share it today because it's, even though we're not exactly Memorial Day, we're pretty darn close to having celebrated it and coming up to 4th of July, just summer full of things to remember why we are so fortunate. As I sit in my comfortable home today with most of my family nearby, I find myself reflecting on all of those in our armed services, moms, dads, sons, uncles, aunts, brothers, and sisters, who are away from home and family. And the reason that they are away is so that I can be with mine. I cannot find any words to express my gratitude and the emotion that this causes me to feel. Bible tells us that no greater love hath a man than to lay his life down for a friend. Our brave men and women in uniform who have never met me, yet choose to call me friend. Our veterans that are honored on Memorial Day, and personally, I honor them every day in my heart, both serving actively and those who have died. They feel that my family and I and our right to live freely are worth their sacrifice. Nelson Mandela once said, "You can see that there is no easy walk to freedom anywhere." And I have walked that long road to freedom. But I can only rest for a moment. For with freedom comes responsibility, and I dare not linger, for my walk has not ended. So along with being carefree today, whatever it is that we have planned, I hope that we will take time examining what more responsibility each of us can take to ensuring freedom for those who come after us. Will you pray with me, please? Gracious heavenly Father, you who have created the heavens and the earth, and each one of us here, I thank you, I give you praise, and I give you glory. You taught us, teach us, and show us every day what ultimate love looks like. And you did that by sending your Son to live among us, to walk among us, and to teach us. Whether we choose to read your Word in the Bible, or whatever it is that we choose to find our truth in, Father, we cannot deny that there is something far greater in this world and universe than we are. And the more we remember that, the better off that we are. And here we are, a group of leaders in our community, in our county. I pray, Father, that you will empower each one of us with your wisdom, Lord, with your love, with your grace, so that when we make the decisions, both some that are easy and some that are hard, that we will think outside ourselves and think instead for those who are less fortunate, perhaps less able, less capable, so that we can make the best decisions possible. Lord, you have given us this opportunity to truly make change and to make our world, and our community actually, a better, better place. And I thank you and give you all the glory. It's in your Son's name I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Melton. We move next to Agenda Item 5, which is a special order of business. This morning, we have Erin Moore here, who will present on behalf of the Kent MSU Extension Office their annual update. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairperson and Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. As you mentioned, my name is Erin Moore. I am the new District 7 Coordinator for Michigan State University Extension. District 7 covers four counties. That's Allegan, Ottawa, Kent, and recent to the district is Berry County. So I had the pleasure of meeting you all back in April very briefly, and have since gotten to see some of you out in the community, which I really appreciate and hope to get to know you all a little bit better over the next coming months. So over the last four months, I have been sitting in on programs that MSU Extension offers in the community at our office, and we have diverse programming. I wish I could tell you all about that today, but we only have a few minutes, so I am going to keep it high level, and we have some program highlights. So I'm going to kick it off and talk to you about the MSU Product Center. What the Product Center is, is a group of staff that are trained as innovation counselors. And what they do is they work with local businesses and local entrepreneurs. And we have one of those local entrepreneurs here with us today. So I'd like to introduce you to Rebecca Cruttendon, if you can call Rebecca, of Clara's Cookies. And she received the Director's Award for the Product Center. So I'm going to have her tell you a little bit about her business and her experience with MSU Extension.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a cookie business called Clara Cookies. We are 100% owned and operated by volunteers, which makes us very unique. We also are approaching cookie instead of a bar, which also makes us unique. My passion is adoption. I have three adopted kids who are now grown. I am an Ironman triathlon. I have done seven Ironmans, training for number eight right now. I needed better protein along the way. I used to be a teacher. I have a lot of initiative. I have a lot of that perseverance. But when it came to starting a business, I really didn't know how to start a food business. So it was pretty amazing, starting off. I had this desire. We had a cookie. My sister went to culinary school. She helped me develop the cookie. We had people that liked it. My husband encouraged me, "You should start a business." But then from there, he is a business owner as an engineer. I didn't know a lot about food business. And so I started asking questions and talking to people. And it was a little bit frustrating until a friend of a friend of a friend said, "You need to talk to Diane at the Product Development Center from MSU. They can get you started." So I made the phone call, and that was how my business started. She came over, we sat down and met. I remember we were at a Starbucks coffee shop, and just sat down, and she helped go over with me a business plan. I had to learn everything as far as packaging and nutrition panels and all of the rules and regulations. So she sat down with me, and we just kind of came up with a business plan. And being the type of person that I am, I just ran with it. Get it? I ran with it. So I'm like, "Okay, I can do this." And so she put me in touch with all the people that I would need to know for all the different steps of the way. So it was really exciting. It took me about a year to get the business off the ground. We did a GoFundMe and raised the complete startup cost to start the company completely debt-free. So we have about 30 stores that sell our cookies now in the West Michigan area. We ship online through our website around the country. We just had our two-year anniversary. We sold 35,000 cookies and donated $4,000 to adoption grants. We work with Bethany here in Grand Rapids and six other agencies around the country. So it's been pretty exciting. I am very much indebted to the Product Development Center for helping me get started. There are a lot of things out there and a lot of businesses, but as far as food business, this was the place to go. This is where I got the information. Any question that they couldn't answer directly, they could get me in touch with the person that could answer it. So in about a year, I went from former music teacher and triathlete to business owner, and it was pretty exciting. And then since we started the business, it's been a really great resource when I have questions along the way. And it was really exciting to get the Director's Award this year. And it was the Director's Award for Social Entrepreneurship, which is exciting, because that's my passion, encouraging other business owners to use their business to support their cause. I wish that I could hang around, but I was telling her, I actually have to go and switch colors really quick, because I've got to be at the bakery. We're going to be baking about 1,000 cookies, starting in about an hour. So I have to slip out, but thank you very much for letting me be here today, and thank you, the Product Center.
Thank you.
So that was really exciting. I had to introduce the Cookie Woman to the Cookie Man this morning.
Cooking Monster.
The Cooking Monster?
Yeah.
It wasn't from me. So our Product Center did 687 counseling sessions this year with 82 local entrepreneurs. And we learned that there was 42 new jobs created and $30 million in investments in those businesses that brought in about $1.4 million in sales. So we were really excited about our involvement with local businesses. So as you may know also, Michigan State University Extension hosts and runs the statewide 4-H program. We have about 219,000 youth enrolled in those programs statewide. In Kent County, that number is growing to about 1,000 local youth. And we are trying to grow that number by bringing in new programs. So I have one more presenter. Susan, would you like to come up to talk to you about a program that we began last year to speak to that need?
Good morning, Susan.
Good morning.
I will be a little boring this morning. I have to read what I wrote, because I'm super excited about this program, and I'm afraid if I don't read it to you, we'll be here till next week. So thank you for allowing me to be here this morning. We've been doing a lot of exciting work in Kent County over the last year, and I'm so pleased to be able to share it with you. Again, my name is Susan Futton. I am a 4-H program coordinator here in Kent County. And over the last year, for the past two school semesters, I've been able to have the privilege to work with Exeto Educativo, which is a program we are implementing at Wyoming High School. It's based on a curriculum developed by the Julian Samora Institute at MSU. It's a six-week program for Latino families to go through with their youth to learn more about the American education systems and promote post-secondary learning. Week after week, high school students, so it's targeted at 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students, attend the classes alongside their parents, which is kind of unique, to learn about the value of college, family communications, the different kinds of higher-ed opportunities, career exploration, financial resources, and the college admissions process. As you can probably, or as you might know or imagine, all of that's pretty intimidating to a lot of people, especially if your family is facing immigration issues, or is, experiences a language barrier, or maybe you're the first person that has ever been able to conceive of going to college in your family. So we are able to help with that process, and that's a huge blessing to be able to do that for us. As facilitators, we walk families through the whole process of what it looks like. So we help them look at their high school transcripts, what that means as they explore careers, picking out youth strengths. And we always deliver the program in English and Spanish, which we feel is really important. We strive to offer always culturally competent, real-world support for these families, to meet them where they're at in their journeys, and to help kind of reduce some of those barriers in an already complicated system. We help them navigate all of these things, including the FAFSA, which if any of you have ever filled out a FAFSA, that's pretty difficult or pretty significant. We walk them through all these, the paperwork. We talk about financial options. We bring in a banker to talk about how they can possibly wrap their minds around paying for college. And then if they're DACA students, or if they have other immigration issues, we help them navigate that paperwork as well. So far, over the last two semesters, we've been able to serve 44 youth from 33 families, because a lot of families will bring more than one youth, more than one high schooler with them. Of that group, we have 10 seniors in our program that have already been accepted to colleges, including MSU, U of M, Ferris, and GRCC. And I have to say, I've been with Extension for almost 10 years now, and this is one of the most, I think, powerful impactful programs that I've been able to be a part of. Every week, we have these busy teenagers, busy parents that do a million things for their kids, show up week after week, and they're highly engaged in our program. They ask good questions. They want to know more. And they're really grateful for this program, and that is really, I think, powerful for me. So I'm grateful to be part of that process for them, be a small part of their kid's journey to college, and I'm really grateful for all of you for supporting that. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Susan, she didn't mention, but she also secured a grant for $17,000 so that she could implement that program next year as well, or in 2018, so in our current year as well. And this is a picture of her group graduating from the program. So lastly, I want to talk to you a little bit about the diverse health programming that MSU Extension offers. We are very traditionally known for the support that we offer our agricultural community, and of course, through our 4-H program. And we're lesser known for the health programming that we offer. In 2017, the Kent County Community Health Needs Assessment listed mental health as the number-one priority for this county. And I'm sure that doesn't come as a surprise to most of you. And we are responding to that in two different ways. The first is we're making sure that all of the staff housed at the county building are trained in mental health first aid. We are frequently in the communities. We're hosting people at our offices, and it's very important that we're recognizing signs and symptoms of mental health issues. The second way we're doing that is by developing new programs and curriculum to respond to that need. And a couple of those programs are listed here. The first is Relax, and that's Alternatives to Anger, also offered in Spanish. We have powerful tools for caregivers. That responds to the growing need that caregivers face when they are taking care of children with a disability, or perhaps an aging adult. There's nurturing families and stress loss with mindfulness. And then, of course, we continue to offer robust nutrition, education, and obesity prevention programs. That is also one of the biggest needs that Kent County faces right now, is rising obesity rates, and we're trying to curb those diabetes rates as well. So with that, I just want to thank you all so much for your support to Kent County MSU Extension. We are very grateful, and I think we have a few more minutes for questions, if anyone has any questions.
Yes, thank you. Any questions this morning? Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you. The presentation mentions that $17,000 for funding for that education program, and it also mentions two different schools in 2018. Do you have an idea already what schools that will be?
The grant that I received was for Wyoming Public Schools, so it'll actually be for two years. So you work for, or you work for, um, around, we are also operating in Kent Central High School, and previously, we're in San Diego Middle School. It's a little early, but it's all the same.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your time and your work. Do you, is there an easy place on your website in the sense of tracking employment in the agriculture sector and how you're, you know, encouraging moving the next generation into that?
I will check back with you. As I mentioned, I'm still new, so I'm not sure if we're tracking that. I do know that we have a beginner farm series. We are working with the Farm Heroes in each of the counties to ensure that they're supported. They're all running young dairy farmer programs to make sure that the next generation is being trained to carry on the work of the agricultural industry. So I can check back about whether or not we're tracking the numbers. I'm not quite sure about that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you, Erin. I'm a life, well, as a grown-up, I was in 4-H all the time, and found that very useful. And I'm glad to see it's still out there. I think it's wonderful for youth that are engaged in something like that, so very good.
Well, thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. Let's move next to public comment. If there's any public comment this morning, please come to the podium. You have three minutes. I do not see any, so we will move then to our consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. I move that we adopt the consent agenda for today's date.
Support. But Commissioner Breavy, questions or comments on this item? I do not see any. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonck.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We move then to Agenda Number 8, and we have three resolutions today. The first one I will call on is, I will call on Commissioner Voorhees for that.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. I would move Resolution 61418, number 38, the assignment of a dispatch addition of construction project to the Kent County Building Authority Facilities Management.
Support. Support by Commissioner Corndyke. Questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Skaggs.
So I just have a couple of questions. So there's no cost in here? What is, what is the actual cost?
The cost could be upwards of $3 million, I believe, for the project as a whole?
No, not for the project, for the, the part that we're sort of agreeing to, I believe, right? Which is the construction planning and building process.
There is no cost. The Building Authority itself is a authority of the county, so these are volunteers that are assigned to this authority, and they review the documents and the plans for the construction of various projects.
So there's no staff time involved?
Well, our staff time, which their compensation is paid through their salaries.
They're not paid extra.
No.
But they would be taking time away from other things, presumably?
True. They will be.
So there's, there's nothing in here that I can see. I mean, what's, what's the next part of this process, should the city decide that they want to negotiate? I don't recall anything coming through here.
That is, that's a good question. We are currently in the process of meeting with the city of Grand Rapids to determine whether or not this project, in fact, will move forward as a, as a part of a consolidation. There are still questions in the air about the willingness of the commission to, to move forward with, with the merger, with the consolidation. So once that's determined, and we hope that that will be done by July 10, we're hoping that they will make a decision at that time. At that point, then, we will move ahead further with the evaluation of what it will cost to build out the facility, to create the merger, moving one PSAP into the, the city PSAP into the Sheriff's Department. So that, all is up in the air, but we're poised and ready to move forward as soon as we know what the city wants to do.
But that would come back to the board, too.
Yes.
So it's not, we're not approving that today.
All right, so there will be a board vote on consolidation.
Oh, absolutely.
We will learn more about this as we go forward.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? I'm not seeing any. This is not a roll call vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to the next gen, or next resolution, I'm sorry, and I call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move Resolution 39 to approve the Kent County Community Action, Annual Action Plan and Budget Amendment to the Kent County Community Action. There's a lot of action in this resolution, but it's not redundant. It's just action.
Action.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Hennessy. Questions or comments on this item? I am not seeing any. This is a roll call vote. I will call on Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 6141839, Commissioners Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonck.
Talan.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioner Antor.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 6141839 is adopted.
Thank you. We move to our third and final resolution, and I'll call on Commissioner Voorhees for some action on this item.
This isn't another action item, Mr. Chairman. Saulfeld, thank you. I would move Resolution Number 40 of today's date to approve the Kent County Community Action Annual Budget for the Weatherization Assistance Program in the Kent County Community Action.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Bukowski. Questions or comments on this item? I see none, so we'll ask.
I, I, I think I know the answer, but I'll have Susan Cervantes, our director.
Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. And what was the question?
I was wondering if we do allocate all that money to projects every year?
Yes, we do.
Are we getting enough?
Yes.
Okay.
We are given a, a unit goal to reach, and each year we've exceeded our units because we've been frugal with our spending, so we can do more than what's required.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I do not see any, so we'll call on Madam Clerk for some action.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 6141840, Commissioners Womack, Voorhees, Vonck, Tallon, Steck, Ponstein, Morgan, Melton, Mast, Corndyke, Coleman, Jones, Hennessy, Bukowski, Breavy, Vice Chair Bolter, Commissioner Antor, Chair Saulfeld. Mr. Chair, you have 17 yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 6141840 is adopted.
Thank you. We move then to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is our second round of public comment. This is a one-minute public comment. Is there any final public comment today? I do not see any, so we will move then to Agenda Item 10, which are our reports. Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair. I have two different reports. The first is from the West Michigan Sports Commission, and if you are looking for something to do in the next few days, there's quite a lot going on. So first, you may have heard the Meyer LPGA Classic, and that is going on, started on Tuesday, and it's going through the 17th at Blyfield Country Club, and that includes 144 top female golfers. So, lots to watch there. And then, the next thing, too, is the USA Weightlifting National Youth Championships. So you could watch some weightlifting at DeVos Place, and that is 694 athletes from 39 states. So quite a bunch of people coming to the area to check out West Michigan. And then, next, we also have the Game Day USA Silver Series Championships, and that's baseball, and that's going to be at the Arvain Sports Complex, and that includes 62 teams and 800 athletes. So, seeing what they do, bringing people to the area, working with experienced Grand Rapids as well, it's a great thing for our community. And then next, I have some updates from the Public Museum. So, there's a couple exhibits currently going on. There's the Zoo in You, which studies the microbiology of your body. And the next exhibit, too, is Be the Astronaut, so you can learn a little bit more about outer space. And coming in the next few months is a dinosaur exhibit, Expedition Dinosaur. And one that I'm really excited about is the toys exhibit, and it kind of follows different decades of toys, so it's something for everyone. There's the baby boomer generation, there's Gen X, there's millennials, and then there's maybe even some toys of today. So, you might even see something from the Breavy personal collection in there, so, yeah. So that will start, I believe that starts in October. That's my update.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Also, on the West Michigan Sports Commission, so that we don't have one person going down the bullet point list of six things, the main weekend for the Meyer State Games is next weekend, June 22nd through the 24th. 38 sports, 6,000 athletes. Along with that, the opening ceremony is Friday, June 22nd, which is held at East Kentwood High School at 6:30 PM. And I'm going to dive in, because you don't know if it's miscellaneous or report, but I'm going to go with a report from the Finance Committee meeting. So we have a Finance Committee meeting coming up on the 19th, and we discussed the possibility of a work session on the Early Childhood Millage, but since the Early Childhood Millage Committee has wrapped up, I think, from what I am hearing, a lot of the questions have been answered in that report, so I just wanted to see very quickly if anyone still feels a 7:30 meeting for that is necessary prior to us discussing it at the Finance Committee. Because there were about eight commissioners that felt at the time before that report came out that they wanted to have a work session, but I think since the report has come out, what is it, 178 pages is, because I...
I'm responsible for three of those.
Okay. I, I think there's a lot of information in there that we didn't have prior, so I guess if there is a show of hands that there's a majority of people that want to still have that, we will. If not, we'll cancel it. There's one, two, three. Well, I, what I'm going to suggest for the three of you is, if you haven't read that 178 pages, have you got...
It's coming out today.
Okay, it's, it'll be headed out today. I think you'll find those answers there, and anything you still have, we'll do at committee. So I'm going to cancel the 7:30 work session, and we'll just answer and discuss this topic at committee, because there'll be plenty of time to handle that, since we have three of us and not, not the eight any longer. So, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. A week ago yesterday, Commissioner Ponstein and I attended the SMART meeting. SMART Commissioners is a consortium of 14 West Michigan counties. We meet every other month, and we, SMART stands for Southwest Michigan Alliance of Region Three of MAC. And get together and just share ideas and things that work, and we've hosted them a couple times here in Kent County, but it was another really fruitful time, just to hear what all is happening in the other 14, the other 13 counties. And so, just to report that Commissioner Ponstein and I are staying on top of and staying with the SMART group. Thank you.
Thanks for attending that. Any other reports? Commissioner Tallon.
Thank you, Chair. The Grand Rapids Downtown Development Authority met yesterday. There's a lot going on downtown, a lot of items, smaller items that we dealt with. Wanted to let you know a couple things. One is, I continue to be, feel very good about how the DDA is working through the goals of its, of the GR Forward Strategic Plan for downtown. And pretty much all of the things that the DDA does are targeted at that plan and the goals of that plan. One of the things that I want to continue to encourage you to take a look at is Movies on Monroe, and I'll put some of these things out on the table in the back. The first Movies on Monroe was last Friday. It was an incredible success. It's now on, well, it's not quite the former county property yet, on North Monroe, but it's on that area right along the river. It's been interestingly improved and decorated, and there were over 4,000 people that came out to see a double feature last Friday night. And I'll leave the schedule out on the table. The other thing I wanted you to know is that, one of the items that we approved is an initiative to develop a visitor parking public information process. So, information to get, or a process to get information to people that are coming to visit downtown. Along with that, I was interested to hear that there are currently 5,000 parking spaces under construction in downtown. Some of that is replacing current spaces, but once that's all done, it will be a net increase of 3,000 parking spaces downtown. So, a lot of talk often about parking downtown. How do we find it? Is there enough? There's a lot being done to address that, and to make it a better experience for everybody coming down there. If you have questions, feel free to connect with me. Thanks.
You have to have made Scott Axson happy. Any other, any other reports today? If not, let's move to Agenda Item 11, which is miscellaneous. And Commissioner Bukowski, I'll start with you.
Chair, speaking of parking, congratulations to the folks that did and are still part of Active Commute Week, so folks encouraging people to commute via other ways than our single occupancy vehicle. And then, Saturday is Pride Fest, so to celebrate, you know, the, the presence and the contribution of our LGBTQ brothers and sisters and neighbors, so that's right out here on this Saturday. And next Friday is Love Wins at the Rainbow Bridge. So that is, yeah, next Friday, what is the Blue Bridge, but it's rainbow next Friday night. And just as a piece of pride, my nephew Eric is extremely involved with the Pride Fest, and that's my brother Dick's oldest son, for those that remember my brother Dick. So, it's always good, and it's a great, great celebration, so hope to see you out there.
Very good. Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two quick announcements. One, just wanted to let everyone know Commissioner Ponstein is at a MAC meeting, and that's why he is not here today. The second is, we have another vacancy on the Kent District Library Board for Region Eight, which is the city of Wyoming. So if anyone knows anyone who lives in that area and is crazy about our libraries, we would love to have their application. So the, I believe the applications will be online and available for the next month, and then we will hopefully get that filled, so, thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Just a shout-out for a fabulous festival, the Arts. I was the commissioner who was honored to open that with the proclamation. I'd like to thank Commissioner Bukowski, who came out as well, who has done it in the past, but allowed a little bit of a change for that proclamation. Also, our Health Department, who spent quite a bit of time making sure all of that food that is helping the community partners that come in to raise money, that that is safe for everyone. I personally did what I could to support a variety of different tents, so I hope that it was successful for them, and what a great event that continues to make Kent County a wonderful place to live, work, and play.
Thank you. Commissioner Breavy.
Thanks, Chair. I wanted to just congratulate the Caledonia Girls' Softball Team. They are playing in the state semifinals tonight, and so it's pretty awesome, pretty good for the community. We do love our softball and baseball, so hopefully the girls win tonight and move on to the finals.
Thank you. Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. Couple things. I don't know if any of you have any neighbors, friends, or relatives who be interested in adaptive water sports, but Kentwood Parks and Rec is the only rec department in the state of Michigan that has a very full adaptive sports program. They just bought a motorcycle, a motorboat for this, and one of the persons that spoke at the fundraiser is a four amputee, arms obviously, and legs, and she, she waterskied. And I don't mind telling you that those of us who are challenged just by getting up on our own little bodies, it was pretty darn impressive, so, very, very exciting. They use reeds, so keep that in mind. The boys' track in Kentwood took state. We might not do other things well in Kentwood, but boy, we run fast, and we, we, we throw things really, really well. And that is all that I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank the DPW for their great work out at North Kent Landfill. They went kind of above and beyond what they normally would do with the situation regarding the PFS. They have now monitored all the wells, the test wells and the retaining wells, or ponds, even though it wasn't really within the, what science would dictate to do all of them, because they had already done samples around there, but they went ahead and did that upon request of not only myself, but I kept agreeing with Oklahoma Township. So I was very thankful that they went back and did that, and it put a lot of people's mind at ease by expecting a few additional hours, and it always was tested quite nicely.
Thank you. Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. While we're doing high school sports, congratulations. Congratulations to the state championship East Grand Rapids Boys Lacrosse Team. That's the back-to-back championships, if you're keeping count, and we are.
Okay. Any other miscellaneous this morning? I do not see any. I only have, just got a note that our very own Commissioner Tallon was appointed to the Immigration Reform Task Force by NACO, so congratulations on that. So if you've got ideas on immigration, please share those with Commissioner Tallon. And for the final one, I'll ask our administrator to...
Yeah, last, last board meeting, I think I mentioned to you that we're making some organizational changes. Craig Paul is moving into the Corporate Council area, and Tim Pike is, Tim Beck is taking his place, sorry, Tim, is taking his place in the IT area, and he's here today. He spoke up at the capital improvement planning meeting, work session, so, Tim, if you want to stand and be introduced, he's our new person that will oversee the IT department, so...
Welcome. All right, that is all we have slated for today, so I'm going to call on Commissioner Melton for adjournment.
Thank you, Chair, and I move that we, subject to the call of the chair, that we adjourn for the day.
Support. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
I'm Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.